Stand with us, please Commissioner Lee Bogel will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Spout our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time and this time of year and the many blessings that you've provided through to us on a daily basis and we hope that we can take a moment to take note of those and take stock of where we are in our lives individually. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a new year and hope that we can move forward with a lot of good plans and good planning that we do throughout this year and we ask that you watch over and guide this commission, watch over and guide this county as we move forward with the growth that we continue to be blessed with and we ask that you help us to make wise decisions on behalf of the many citizens of this county. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to watch over our emergency services workers and keep our military safe and all that they do keeping us safe. In your son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Call roll please, girl.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion, Craig Lynch, David Jones, Jim Aberwater, Lee Bogel, Marvin Whitworth, Mike Kush, Pettish Reed, Rhonda Allen, Jeff Phillips. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Remind everyone that the steering committee is meeting next door and we have two planning commissioners who are also county commissioners, Mike Kush and Pettish Reed, who will join us as soon as that meeting ends and it should be shortly. I'd also like to kind of remind everyone that David Jones, he did an answer roll call, but he's having surgery this week and it's not a life-threatening surgery or anything, but it's not the type of surgery that's going to be pain-free. He'll have some healing to go through, so y'all remember David in your daily thoughts and prayers as we go through. We don't have any minutes to approve, so we'll get right into our business if we could. 6A is a new business and we have, I think, three items set up for rezoning request tonight and I'll remind everyone that's here, this is a recommending body. Our recommendation will go before the full county commission and they will make the final decision on these rezoning requests and these requests will go before the full county commission on February the 17th, be 6:30 PM in this room. 6AA, the item number is REZ22-001, Hunter Brothers, location is Burntob Road, commission district is nine, the county commissioner is Joe Gurley, size of the site is approximately three and a half acres, tax map is 77, existing zoning is RM for residential medium density, proposed zoning is LI for light industrial. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you and good evening, everyone. Happy New Year, hope everybody's doing well tonight. This first application, as stated, is located along Burntob Road. Information provided by the applicant indicates that he wants to run his business, which specializes in large commercial concrete and demolition projects in the middle Tennessee area. Most of his company's work is found in Rutherford County, so he's looking for a location to build a warehouse and storage area for his business. This is essentially a lay-down yard is what this would be. The concept plan has been included with your agenda materials. The applicant does propose to build an 8,000 square foot structure along with an access drive and storage area behind the building. Building setbacks in the light industrial are 50 feet for the front and back and 20 feet for the, I'm sorry, 50 for the front and 20 feet for the sides and rear property lines. We did inform the applicant that the setbacks they have drawn on their concept plan didn't match what the zoning requires. He is aware of that. Now, again, this is conceptual, so they're not bound by this by any means, but just wanted to alert the planning commission to that, that the setbacks they do show are a little off on their on their concept plan. Access, of course, would be along Burntob Road. The number of required parking spots, parking lot design, et cetera, that would all be determined by the requirements of the zoning ordinance should this application be approved through an engineered site plan. There's no traffic study that's been required at this time, but if we feel one is warranted at site plan, should this be approved, we can certainly do that. Properties located within the light industrial zone are required to provide a type III buffer adjacent to residential property. This would require buffering along the north and the west side and not so much the east side, just because it's already zoned, light industrial. This can consist of landscape material, combination of fencing and landscaping and, again, has to be demonstrated on a site plan, so we can verify compliance and our performance standards would also apply to this particular property. Several properties in this area have been rezoned to light industrial over the last couple of years. The proximity of the rock quarry, the lack of water infrastructure and septic soils makes residential development of this area and this property in particular impractical. So we do feel, from staff standpoint, that this request is consistent with our comprehensive plan and we would recommend approval. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, any questions for staff at this time? Is the applicant available? Name and address for the record.
No, you come on.
You turn around. If you would, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name's Cole Newton. I'm a civil engineer with TKC Architecture and Engineering and helping the applicant out here. Address is 2004 Carmack Boulevard, Columbia, Tennessee.
Go ahead and give your names.
Hunter Brothers, applicant, 1339 Old Columbia Road, Chapel Hill, Tennessee.
Thank you very much. Brief description of what you're planning on doing?
Yeah, so, you know, we're trying to get-
You can just face those guys.
Yeah, trying to get light industrial to be able to, you know, pretty much do everything. The staff said here, put in a family-owned business that does large concrete demolition work across middle Tennessee. It'll be, in essence, you know, a warehouse, an office and lay-down yard to be able to work out of to go to the project sites. You know, if you add anything to that?
No, that's about it, really.
This is new business? Where are you located now?
Farm in Chapel Hill, so, yes, sir.
Any questions for the applicant while they're here?
Chapel Hill, Tennessee, yes, sir. Oh, you're, I can hear you.
Excuse me, I need to use this thing. What, tell me a little bit about the traffic you have coming in, what kind of vehicles? You know, how big are trucks are they? How many are there? How many employees you'll have coming and going from there?
Typically, on a daily morning, you'll see maybe five trucks come in and out. Our biggest vehicle right now is a, it's a day cab, it's a single axle truck, a dump truck. We don't have any tri-axle, you know, trucks, as you see, coming out of Rogers Group there. Maybe on a given day, the guys come to a shop on a rain day and work, maybe 20 cars tops. More than anything, we just need a place that we can call home that's not an hour south of where we work, so, you know, we just did the Mali addition and I think, I think we tracked it. We spent a lot of money going back and forth from Chapel Hill to the Mali warehouse over there, so.
Any, I'm assuming just weekdays, no nights, yeah, all of your trucks in in the evenings?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be Monday through Friday generally. I try to work on Saturday, but most of that probably won't be circled or entertained around our workspace there if it were passed, so.
Other questions? Thank you. This time I'll declare a public hearing open for REZ22-001 for the Hunter Brothers. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Staff comments. We have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, REZ22-001 for Hunter Brothers. Other questions or comments? All is in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6AB, REZ22-002, Chris Oliver for OW Holdings Incorporated, location is 5276 Leanna Road, I guess it's Leanna Road, Road? Leanna Road, commission district is three, the county commissioner is Michael Rather. The size of the site is approximately 8.1 acres, but approximately only one acre will be rezoned. Tax map is 48. The existing zoning is for RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to make sure that you knew for sure that Leanna was a road.
A road there?
It's a road, definitely a road, so, sorry. Thank you for pointing that out. The applicant proposes to rezone, as you stated, approximately one acre of land for an expansion to an existing self-storage facility, which is adjacent to the subject property. This current facility was zoned commercial services back in 2015. The land, if approved, will initially be used for construction access to phase two of the existing self-storage facility, which was approved by the planning commission back in February of last year and I have included a concept plan with your agenda materials as well. Self-storage, mini warehouse-type facilities are only allowed in the commercial services zone by special exception, so if this rezoning application is approved, the applicant's aware they will also have to apply for an expansion to the Board of Zoning Appeals before moving forward with a site plan. So, just so everybody's clear, rezoning the property does not approve the business or the, I'm sorry, the approve the expansion of what they want to do. This is kind of the first step in the process. Concept plan does show internal access to the existing self-storage facility as well as a second access point to Leanna Central Valley Road. The number of required parking spots, parking lot design, et cetera, will be determined by the requirements of the zoning ordinance, again, should this application be approved. As with the last application, we talked a little bit about the traffic study, not required at this point, but if we do feel one is warranted, we can require that at the site plan stage should this be approved. Properties located in the commercial services district are required to provide a type II buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property, which in this case, if this is approved, would only be required on the south side because the northern and western sides are already zoned commercial services and this would be an expansion of that existing facility. And, again, the performance standards would have to apply. Portions of this property were rezoned back in 2015 to allow the existing self-storage facility, again, after special exception approval from the BZA. Staff does expect the remaining property, as you see on the map, that remaining RM property, even outside of this acre, over time, I believe, will eventually all be zoned commercially at some point. This area being rezoned, again, is for the eventual expansion of that self-storage facility, so we do feel that this is a consistent request with our plan and we would recommend approval. And, as always, I'm always, and Mike and I are both available for questions.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff?
I do. They, they want to rezone the, all the property to add one building?
No, they don't want to rezone an acre of the property. They're, oh, asking for an acre of the entire tract, yes.
Have there been any issues with this first phase, I would call it, as far as compliance or complaints or anything?
No, it seemed to perform well. I haven't had any complaints.
Performing, okay.
And as far as any phone calls on this particular application, I did receive one phone call earlier today, once I explained what it was, the person didn't have any issues with it.
Okay, buffers, drainage, everything good?
Everything seems to be fine.
Okay.
Mike, I'll let you, yeah.
Questions at this time?
I'm Chris Oliver, 224 Old Orchard Drive, Laskasses, Tennessee. I'm a managing member of OW Holdings. We purchased this property a few years ago, we built the first phase and we've had tremendous success, fortunately, with that. Currently, it's full. This was our first project of this type and part of it involves parking. There seems to be a really large demand for parking campers and boats and things like that and we probably underestimated the amount of space needed for such things, so adding this additional acre and a possible additional exit for those larger vehicles will be the biggest benefit. Obviously, if it, if it turns out, we would probably look at adding more storage if we can, if we can make things work with the way that they need to as well and in the immediate time, using this, you know, for the construction of the phase two and that kind of tight area would help us as well. That's, that's basically what we're asking for right now. Mr. Taylor can add anything?
I'm Matt Taylor from SEC 850, Middle Tennessee Boulevard. I think Chris and Doug did a good job, no reason for me to drag that out unless somebody's got a question.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
This time I'll declare a public hearing open for item REZ22-002, Chris Oliver for OW Holdings. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve with staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve REZ22-002, Chris Oliver for OW Holdings. Any other questions or comments? All is in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6AC, REZ22-003, Clyde Roundtree for WTI Tank, location is Couchville Pike, commission district is three, county commissioner is Michael Rather. Size of the site is approximately four and a quarter acres, tax map is three, existing zoning is RM for residential medium density, proposed zoning is CG for commercial general. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you and I may have, I apologize. We actually, when we did this, I must have forgot to change that. That's actually supposed to be light industrial, not CG. The staff report's correct, I guess I forgot to change it here, I'm sorry, but anyway, just as a way of background here, the applicant is proposing to rezone this prop-
Say that, please, I'm having a hard time.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought my mic's on, okay. Can you hear me better now? Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Can you start with the correction you're saying?
Yes, the, we, what staff recommended for the zoning, they had asked for commercial general, but we felt light industrial was a better classification for what they were asking for, so apparently that didn't get changed on here, that's, that's on me, but, but yeah, the staff report does state light industrial, not commercial general. I think the mail-outs we did said light industrial as well, so.
Light industrial is correct?
That's what they're asking for. That's what we, I've put out there, yes, yes, ma'am. Okay. The applicant is proposing to rezone this property to rent what are roll-off storage containers. These containers are for various non-hazardous waste products such as contaminated soil, processed material, nor, no storage, excuse me, of residual waste is allowed onsite. The containers are inspected after use and cleaned before bringing them back onto the property. If they're not cleaned, they are transported to a third-party clean-out facility. I will say this information that I'm giving you was from the applicant and is, there's some email correspondence to you in your staff report from that regard. Let's see, the business also specializes in liquid storage tanks, fresh water and fresh water transport. We have included, again, some email correspondence on this. They originally had requested on their application, commercial general, but after reviewing the submitted, submitted materials, we felt that light industrial was more appropriate classification for this type of business and we did let the applicant's representative know. A concept plan has been included with your agenda packets. They're not showing any kind of a primary structure on the property, they're just showing that this is really more for tank storage. The site would be, again, for the tank and storage only. The closest residential structures to the west and east are approximately 300 and 210 feet respectively, again, based on the information provided to us and, which seemed to be consistent with what our GIS shows. And they plan to save as many trees as possible for the buffer area. Access would be along Couchville Pike. The number of required parking spots, design of the lot, et cetera, would be determined by the requirements of the zoning ordinance should this be approved through an engineered site plan. There would also have to be a truck turning template for us to look at as well. Properties in light industrial districts are required to provide a type III buffer, which, similar to the first application we looked at tonight. Buffering would be required on all sides except the north side, which is along the road. We don't require it along that side. Their concept plan does show a minimum 50-foot buffer on the south side and 30-foot buffers on the east and west side, so, again, that's conceptual, they're not bound by that, but that just gives you an idea of what they'd be having to look at. And the performance standards, again, would apply. The applicant is requesting non-residential zoning in an area that's primarily a single-family in nature. There are warehouse distribution use, distribution, excuse me, uses approximately one mile to the east in Wilson County, but there's not any residential, non-residentially zoned property in a county near this subject site. We did have conversations with the applicant's representative several weeks before it was submitted and stated the concerns that I just relayed to you. This use does appear to be heavily buffered and the amount of activity appears to be minimal, but those were some of the concerns that we did have. This is within Smyrna's urban growth boundary. I did reach out to them about their future land use plan. They said their plan supports low-density residential development in this area. They did state that their plan supported some neighborhood commercial nodes at the intersection of Weekly Lane and Couchville Pike and at the intersection of Rockdale Fellowship Road North Lamar, but not so much in this area. Now, again, that's just their land use plan. I also reached out to the planning director in Wilson County to get his take, because this is immediately adjacent to their jurisdiction. He said that this was further away, they don't really have any kind of commercial activities this far to the, I guess, west from where those particular warehouse uses are. Again, I just wanted to relay that for informational purposes, but with that, we did receive several phone calls about this, so I just wanted to make you aware, several in opposition, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for staff?
Doug, I've got a question. If this is changed to light industrial, and I didn't ask this a moment ago, but what else could come in other than what he's asking for now?
Our zoning ordinance would allow for a variety of different light industrial uses. I mean, I can pull up the ordinance and go through some of them, but various commercial industrial-type uses would be allowed at that point. Now, I don't know, the site itself isn't just, you know, extremely large, so that's going to limit a certain amount of activity, plus, you know, if there's a lack of septic soils and everything, that'll also limit any kind of intensity of development.
Other questions for staff? Is this property kind of standalone? Is there, is the owner in, live in the area? Do you have any idea?
I, I don't.
Other questions for staff at this time? The applicant available? The applicant here?
Yes.
Could you please?
Are you asking if there's any opposition?
Nope. I'm asking if the applicant is available. Is the applicant here?
Now, Clyde, I'm honestly a little surprised. Clyde Roundtree is the representative for the applicant. I don't see him here, that's highly unusual for him. I hope he's all right.
Is the applicant or representative of the applicant here? Speak up. Questions, what's your choice?
It has historically been the behavior of this commission to not address applications when the applicant's not available to answer questions, so I'm open to either denying it for that reason or deferring it if they want to reapply next month.
This area is not decided yet? Not yet.
I would hate to defer this when we obviously have concerned citizens that have taken the time out of their day to come and voice their opinions. So I would, I would not be, I would not want to defer it where they would have to do that again.
I concur with what you said. My concern is somewhat, my demeanor is somewhat upset, simply because we're here, they're here, and he's not here. And it's, I'm of the opinion that, never mind.
And if I may say, I know historically, that's kind of been the, the direction the planning commission has gone, as far as if an applicant doesn't show up, it's just automatically deferred to the next meeting. I don't think that's law anywhere. Now, if you wanted to hear the, the public speak and then defer after that, I mean, that's certainly an option, but what I would be careful of is just simply recommending denial based on the fact that they're not here. I don't think that's appropriate. I know this is just a recommendation at this point, you know, this is not the full Board of Commissioners, but I think hearing the people that are here and then if you wanted to make a denial at that point or even an approval, at least at that point, you would have some more facts before you.
Okay, we're scheduled for a public hearing and we're going to have a public hearing on this, you'll have a chance to speak. I will ask that you refrain or, or limit your comments to three minutes, so we can get through this at a reasonable time. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ22-003, Clyde Roundtree for WTI Tank. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Don't be shy, I know you're not. If you would, please, girl, your name and address. We've done it a lot, so you're in, you're in, you're in good hands. If you would, make your comments into the mic. Would the next person come up and be ready?
Thank you. Thank you, I've not done this before, so correct me and guide me in the right directions. First of all, I've got word about the, the change from mixed residential, medium residential to light industry, along with this letter that we received approximately two weeks ago and we didn't really know what it meant, so we tried to look up some things and see some things and talking with some folks. We have a, an interest in this particular issue of changing from one thing to another because we have property that backs up considerably. We own Couchville Corner. You can see it right there and we would back up to it in the back in the woods where we are. And also, yes, it cuts off a portion of the property that's next to us. We have two pieces of property, do you see that? No, ours is that one and the next one down, right there. Okay, so that's Fellowship Road there and then that's Couchville Lane. To speak quickly to this, we have seen traffic pick up on Couchville Pike unbelievably since warehouses have been built and we've seen at least four wrecks sitting on our front porch that were very serious because there wasn't any kind of light out there on the corner. It used to be, nobody drove by there, but if we're talking about planning, it does seem to me that some of that kind of thing needs to be thought of before there's big changes towards more traffic and more things going on back there. Also, our property, even though we have a portion of it that we mow and maintain, we also have a considerable portion of it that's in woods and trees and is certainly a well-made buffer area, but the point of it being is that, you know, that area has been cared about in terms of, you know, letting some trees stand, okay? We have across the way, on the north, on the north side of that street there, those are people. Do you see their houses up there? I mean, that, all along there is houses. On Fellowship, Rockdale Fellowship Road, you'll see houses there and it goes actually down, down the road as being very nice houses with five-acre plots at least and even though that's in Wilson County, I think that, you know, sometimes you have to think about your neighbors and I don't know where they would have a chance to say anything, I'm not sure they've been contacted, but for those reasons, we sort of- I'm not sure they've been contacted, but, um, for those reasons, we sort of, um, feel that we'd at least like to have had a little more time, but we, um, we're kind of speaking against that kind of, it has nothing to do with planning, you know? If it's, if it's already set in place and that's not going to fit in with homes and houses that people live in. We live where we are and, uh, it means a lot to us, so thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Will the next person please come up?
Yes, I own, uh, the property adjoining on the other two sides of 6209 Couchville Pike. And from my corner of my house to the corner of that property is probably 150 to 200 feet. Um, and, you know, the, the road Couchville Pike by itself, just like she addressed, when you come across that hill right there to Wilson-Rutherford line, you take your life in your hands. You know, as soon as I top, I have to really make sure, you know, and make sure nothing's coming for me to make my turn or, you know, you'll almost get run over. And I don't know if they can take that down enough to make it where the trucks can turn without being, you know, non-spotted. Um, and, you know, nobody wants a hazard dump in their backyard and it sounds like, you know, just like a tractor-trailer's that hauls rubbish. There's no way you can wash those containers out enough where you're not going to have an odor and are they going to have a washout base there to clean it out? Um, you know, it's just, that should be, you know, and the property alone, it'll probably cost them $50,000 to $75,000 just to get the rock down, down low enough where they can build on. I mean, there's crevices out there you could throw bodies down in. You know, it's really an undesirable piece of property, but I hate to see it turned to something like that, a dump site. That, well, that's, that's about all I got to say. Thank you.
You know who owns it? You know who owns that piece of property?
Four acres.
Yeah, the one that's scheduled to be, is asking for the rezoning. Do you know who owns it?
No. It's been, went up for sale several months back and we called about it, but they just wanted too much money for what it, for what it is. It was astronomical. Uh, the lady out of, I don't even know who she's out of state. And I think they purchased it about 30, 35 years ago and realized it's basically useless property.
Mr. Chair, according to the GIS system, it looks like the current owner's Stony Mountain Holdings, L.C.
Uh, I live right down the road from where they, uh, gonna build this property, where they want to build this. And I've been there since 1989. And I'm not even going to talk about the traffic out there because, well, that's uncut out of hand a long time ago. Trucks and all that stuff. But what you better worry about is they're talking about four acres there and they're gonna, and they're gonna raise it. Okay, we have water issues out there. I've just learned, well, I live here, I just live with it. In 2010, we had fluid, water comes up fast. Okay, we're gonna have a lot of, uh, it's industrial thing, talking about four acres. I think you gotta have five acres to put a mobile on. And they're gonna put an industrial thing on four acres. All right, you're gonna have a lot of concrete, gonna have a lot of asphalt, and the water's going somewhere. It's not gonna exactly, I'm not gonna get all of it, but I tell you what's gonna go. It's gonna run down to White's Market and it's going over into Wilson County and they're gonna spread out. And these people are biting off something with just the water. 'Cause I'm telling you, it's, and then, and I'd like to say something else. We wouldn't even be here if these people would go right across 840 behind the fairgrounds. Because you can build anything you want over there. And they wanting to move into a, a residential, an old-established residential neighborhood and noise, traffic, all kind of problems. And I live in Rutherford County, but I can throw a rock and hit Wilson County. And I got some good neighbors over in Wilson County and I'm telling you, I don't see any of them here. And Rutherford County is gonna set up here and they're gonna make a decision to build this. And man, it's gonna affect Wilson County and you're gonna, and Wilson County is gonna be looking at you. And it's gonna be water and noise and everything else. And, uh, do whatever you want to do, but I'm telling you, you're biting off more than you can chew.
I'm Debbie Brown. I live a little further up on Couchville Pike. I actually live to the, I guess it's the west of this. I live probably a half-mile from where this is being developed. Uh, I have been out there for 30-some-odd years. I do not like all the industries, industries that have already come in on the other end of Couchville Pike. There are tractor-trailers that come through there and they come through there very fast. It's very dangerous. My dad, who is 91-years-old, lives very close to where this is, is being proposed. Uh, he is not even allowed to walk out to the mailbox anymore for fear of being hit. I have two uncles that also live in that same general area and it's dangerous. We do not need anything like this in a residential area, period. And to Joe's comment, as far as the drainage, if, if that is a problem, it's going to be a serious problem because it already backs up really bad at Lacy's Market. It goes across the road as it is. So I am definitely opposed to it.
Thank you.
This is almost too high for me. But we would, we live almost next door to where this will be. And we have been flooded at one time, as Joe mentioned about the flooding. I'm worried about that. Also worried if they blast, they're gonna tear my house up. We've lived there 45 years and I intended to live there till I died. And I hate the thought of having to move somewhere, but we don't like the traffic. We don't want any of it. I'm completely opposed to it, me and my family.
I'm a lifelong resident of Couchville Pike, uh, like most of these folks out here. Uh, grown up on this road from, you might see a car drive down that road, one, one car a day to, it's a expressway now. It's, it's bad sometimes. It's really bad. There's hardly times that a car's not driving down our road or a semi-truck or, or a dump truck or you name it. Uh, we have a lot of wrecks on this road. I've called the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department to get them to step up their patrols out there during rush hours, you know, in the morning and the evenings. Um, we pulled three cars out of the ditches like right by our house this past snowfall. You know, there's, it's just, it's out of hand, you know? And I believe they rammed through the stuff over in Wilson County with these warehouses and, uh, and whatnot. And I, I don't know what those folks, if they turned out against it or whatnot, but we're here, we're against it. These folks that want to do that are not here. Um, and you guys, you know, in your prayer said, you know, you want to do what's best for the people that you work for and this would not be best for us. Um, we have no idea really what they're gonna do. They tell you what they're gonna do, but, um, you know, I'm concerned about the runoff. My father's house flooded in 2010 and we had to go get them out and it was, it was bad. And then every time it rains, it does that. The, the water backs up, there's sinkholes everywhere around this area and the lake floods and backs up and it's, and the runoff, you know, like they're talking about, it will runoff down and make the problem worse at the Lacy's Market. It, it floods already there now. So, um, I'm, I'm voicing my concern and I'm against it. Um, and I hope that you guys will vote it now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is, is Brian Eady. I'm a lifelong, um, I've lived on Couchville Pike my whole life, grew up. My, my grandparents were there, my parents are there, both set of grandparents were there. It's a complete residential area. Uh, I would hate for one commercial to come in and that opens the door for a lot more commercials to be approved because there's a lot of land still out there that could be, you know, for residential, but if you give one, one commercial a foot in the door, it's over with, just like what happened on 840 at Couchville Pike. You know, I know that's Wilson County, but look at it now. That was, that was nice farmland, could have been a lot of nice neighborhoods, but it's just trucking companies. That's all, that's it. It's just, just junk. And don't do that to Rutherford County. That's a nice residential area. It's nice. You know, it's by the lake. We don't need commercial in that side of Rutherford County. That's my opinion. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Now I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, we've got a lot of great places in this county and, uh, that are, that, that are already set up, zoned. They have the infrastructure ready for, uh, something like this. I don't believe a residential area is appropriate for this particular application, therefore I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Second, second. We have a motion and a second to deny REZ-22-003. Part of that motion deals with spot zoning in a residential area. Is that correct? Very good. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, uh, I, I would like to add just a little bit to, uh, the, the motion. I'm not adding to the motion. I'm agreeing with the motion, but for Nick's probably behalf and a reason to deny, I, I want to make a couple environmental concerns. Um, there's a letter in the packet that, uh, was provided, that's in the iPad, from Clyde Roundtree to Doug, um, that's, uh, talks about, it's from Brian. I'm not sure who Brian is, but it talks about the types of containers, uh, you know, storing of, of liquids, um, uh, and the environmental services, but, you know, it's contaminated soil. It talks about, uh, processed materials, but we don't really have a definition of what processed materials are. They talk about protect, protecting the trailers with a thin six-millimeter liner, which they, they kind of refer to as a big trash bag. But here's, here's the issue. This is gonna be on what appears to be a rock parking lot, right Doug? According to that little sketch, this is not asphalt, this is not concrete.
Well, that's what they would want to do, but yeah.
Okay, well, containers are not watertight. I, I'm in the construction business. Containers are not watertight. Whatever, um, this material is that is processed, you know, they say it is non-hazardous, but it's, it's, you know, what is the definition of non-hazardous? Is it something you want leaking through into your water table? Probably not. Uh, will it have an odor when it gets wet? Yes, certainly. Uh, will, will there be stormwater issues as it leaks out through the gravel and infiltrates in the soil? Certainly. Have we heard anything about how to comply with that? No. Unfortunately, uh, Mr. Roundtree's not here, uh, to defend that, but for a variety of reasons, this is why I'm stating my comments, for a variety of reasons, I would agree and would wholeheartedly, uh, vote, uh, to deny the request.
Commissioner Abrewater, would you, uh, agree to adding those comments to your motion?
Uh, well, all of those points are very valid, uh, and should be included in the motion.
Included in the second as well. Okay, but once again, um, we have a motion and a second to deny request REZ-22-003 Clyde Roundtree for WTI Tank. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the, the motion to deny, please say aye. There any opposition? The motion to deny carries unanimously. I'd like to personally thank you guys for being in here. Your presence makes a difference to this commission. Um, let me just make one particular comment that relates to, uh, drainage and water, those type of things. We, we have an issue with that all over Rutherford County. Uh, some areas a lot worse than others. No piece of property can be developed without a contention plan for that water. So if this were to be developed in any way, there would have to be an engineering plan put together to handle that water so it would not have a negative impact on any surrounding property. As a matter of fact, we would even ask that it would help drainage on adjacent property. Our county engineer would see that that happens. So from any development that might go in there, whether it's any type of, an, commercial or industrial, at some point in time, there'd have to be a plan put together that sees, that sees that your property would not be damaged in any way, any further than it already is. Uh, so some of your concerns would be addressed during our planning process. But the reasons, the main reasons for us denying this is because this would be a commercial development, industrial development into a highly residential area and we're going to try our best to protect your neighborhoods. So thank you for being in here and thank you for your input. Doug, any business?
Uh, no, sir. Don't have anything further.
Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for 9:00 a.m. January 24th, right here in this room. Uh, anyone have any football announcements or anything, uh, for tonight as we get into, uh, the SEC championship, national championship game?
Or two.
Amen. And also go Blue Raiders, I guess. Thank you for your attendance and, uh, your participation tonight. We are adjourned.